You bet.
Actually, it is to the firing of the United States of America. And to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Welcome to Monday's meeting. And I have everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from July eighth.
Yep.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Approved claims with the county auditor for seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fourteen cents.
Uh, so move to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Names are approved. Um, approved employee claims filed with the county auditor for one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
So move.
Okay.
First and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, approve employee position change for Dave Bergfield to materials tech effective July eighth of two thousand and twenty-four, and this is for secondary roads.
Option to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Approved location amendment for Buchanan County Fair liquor license.
So moved.
First.
Second.
And second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right, place on file the following manure management plans. Allen Forest Site Number Two Freeman Township, Section Thirty-five, Porkchop Ranch, Inc., Liberty Township, Section Fifteen, Smiths Farms Indy LLC, Sundar Township, Section Twenty.
Motion to place on file.
First.
Second.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, um, update the Wopsy watershed funding. John, you wanna bring us up to speed on that?
Do that. So. We've been working on this for the last year. Historically, we did a six hundred dollar per entity voluntary contribution to fund the watershed. And unfortunately, it's not nearly enough to cover the coordinator expenses that we uh, need to fund the watershed. Uh, last year, after repeated phone calls to several entities, I finally got it up to a little over ten thousand dollars, but uh, Northeast Iowa RC and D does our coordinator efforts as a part-time uh, job since we lost our coordinator uh, several years ago. Uh, the old coordinator was salaried over fifty thousand dollars and plus you had benefits and everything, so it was a very costly endeavor. Uh, Northeast Iowa RC and D uh, committed they would work as a part-time employee uh, to do the grant handling and everything else for us. And we looked at several other funding options similar to how uh, McCoquod River or or McCoquod River watershed does it and Middle Cedar and it's population-based. And I meant to run a copy of this for you guys, but I didn't do it, but I will do it now. Um, being population-based, it's gonna significantly increase what the county would be contributing, but yet it's more equitable. Uh, it it's it's crazy for a little town like Ferdicksburg to contribute six hundred dollars and the county to contribute six hundred dollars.
And a lot of this has got to do because of that HUD money has been exhausted.
Exactly.
Is any of this basically supposed to go to RC and D? Is is this any of this gonna? Any of this money you planning on going towards funding any partially funding any programs?
No. This, well, it could possibly, but uh, most of the time, the co-funding of any project would be far in excess of whatever we would have put in. This is mainly to fund their contributions that they make. As far as time, they only charge us for when they're working on the project. And it's more, it's kind of like an attorney where you get billable hours type of thing, because they they have multiple projects that they work on. And we're gonna have to thank you. Right now, we're contributing eighteen hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Now, six hundred.
Six hundred dollars, and they're proposing we would contribute eighteen hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Chickasaw County.
Whoops, thirty-two fifty, based on our population. And we thought going population-based, it would be a lot more equitable to all the entities. And from the meeting we had last week, most every entity was pretty much in favor of this, and we're gonna have a vote on it next meeting. But uh, I would propose that we would go to the thirty-two fifty. Independence, which is uh, population right now that is contributing five thousand dollars a year uh, would go back down to four thousand dollars a year because they're the largest single entity in the county or in the watershed. And I feel Independence will probably contribute five thousand again next year, but this is all proposed.
And the other watersheds that we got three watersheds in our county.
Correct.
And they're all working on doing it on population, not on property evaluations.
The McCoquod River does it on po- on population. Middle Cedar, I haven't figured out their
formula?
Formula, but uh, we're paying more for both of those than we are for our own watershed, which is right here in the county. And if you look at them, McCoquod River, we have about fifteen miles watershed, and that's it, because it starts up by Lamont and then heads over to Delaware County.
So this total dollar amount here, this twenty-nine thousand, three twenty-nine seventy-one, is that enough to take care of RC and D with?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Will there be any balance left over?
It would be reserved for any projects or anything else that we have.
But this just takes care of a coordinator. It doesn't even take care of any projects that we have?
It could. Right now, it it's, I can say it's fee-based on what time they commit to the watershed. Uh, historically, they tried to shoot for a goal of about eighteen thousand dollars a year. So this would be significantly more than what they're currently charging us. But it would also help with any grant funding or anything else that we would have some financial ability to supplement a grant that becomes available.
Because you always have to match the grants.
Exactly. Most of them all call for matching.
Right.
Why is the different counties soil water conservation districts, why are they?
That's based on water sampling. They do our water sampling for us, and some of them do more water sampling than others. If you look at like Chickasaw, they have five water sampling locations. So that's why they're higher. And you look down at Howard and Fayette, they have no water sampling locations, so they're just getting a basic fee.
So this would be for what fiscal year?
Twenty-twenty-six.
Okay.
So we're trying to get it out early, so.
This will be, this will be the following year budget talk.
Correct.
Okay.
One of the things.
Hopefully, everybody will voluntarily get in there because this is basically a volunteer thing. I mean, you cannot force these entities.
Exactly.
Pay this amount.
Exactly. It's it's all voluntary contributions, and that's why you see a broad range of historical contributions as to what they actually contribute.
I see there are some counties that didn't zip.
Some cities didn't do anything.
Yes.
Are they even part of your talks? The cities that didn't do anything, are they part of your?
Oh, yeah.
Talks, okay.
Yeah. And like I said, I made personal phone calls to uh, several of the entities that hadn't contributed because we need the funding.
Are you still chair?
Yes. Now, I just got re-elected last month for another year. But RC and D does a pretty remarkable job for being part-time coordinators. They really watch the grants and when we did the over two million dollar grant that we had from HUD, um, it started out kind of slow, and all of a sudden it went crazy, and we did twenty-nine projects. And after we got done, we had several landowners contacting us wanting to have one done on their property, and we had no money left. So we couldn't do it. So they're kind of in a holding pattern, but.
When you go, when you go to these cities, especially the ones that have not contributed or the counties and stuff, is there something taken to them showing what has been done for projects? Oh, the, this is a beneficial thing that's being done for our environment?
I have not met with them personally to take like our copy of our water management plan, that type of thing. I've done mainly on the phone. But there's several of these that we probably need to do that with where we would meet with them and and talk about the importance of it. This is a really tough situation because it is all voluntary. You cannot mandate the pay that.
Well, we all knew when this all started several years ago that that HUD money was gonna be used up and there's gonna be probably no more of it. And it was always wondering how we're gonna make these watersheds this stable.
Uh, well, and, yeah, I have a legislature last year discussed it, but failed to act on it. And it's one of the things that is a huge uh, opportunity for the state of Iowa. I think we have nineteen watersheds now in the state, and funding from the state would be amazing.
Do you, do you know where these watersheds, I mean, we got until the end of the month to get something to ISAC on legislative priorities and things that we want to see done down there? Has this been brought up for ISAC to push this? And lobby for it?
I know for the August meeting, I'm scheduled to be a co-speaker for a watershed uh, session at the first day of the uh, ISAC conference with the uh, coordinator from the McCoquod River watershed. And I'm sure we will bring it up there, but I'm not sure if that's been proposed to ISAC.
Yeah, because ISAC's got, I think their deadline's uh, July twenty-eighth, they get something in, so if you're meeting in August, it's kind of after the fact.
Right. I won't have to maybe tag something up and.
Maybe you'll call uh, one of the ISAC people down there and ask them.
Jamie or Lucas?
Jamie or Lucas, yeah.
Yeah. Send something into them about that because that would be a huge benefit.
Oh, right.
And you look at the flooding out in Western Iowa, that could be right here
Hmm.
next year. You never know. And resiliency and uh, how to recover from those
Hmm.
is a key issue.
Yeah, there's been a lot of retention put in, and I think that's a big help when you, especially when you got flash flooding and stuff.
Yeah. And you look at us, how high the river's been this year, and we have not had any major flooding issues, and you might be able to attribute part of that to the twenty-nine projects that we did in the southern part of the watershed.
No.
Anyway, I wanted to bring that up to us and get your thoughts on increasing our commitment to the watershed.
Well, I'm sure you'll be getting the letter into the board uh, for the request. Yeah, budget time.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for the information, John.
You bet.
And I also looked it up, um, so you can go and you can see their plan on upperwopsy.org.
Yeah, I've got it. There there's a lot of good links on that website that uh, detailed a lot of the efforts that they've made so far and what the goals are.
All right. Thanks for the information.
Yeah.
Let's discuss the EMS plan. So essential services people came up with. The EMS Association came up with a different plan that I like a lot better moving forward. And I spoke with Joseph's ambulance chief, and she got kind of a small budget. She doesn't have numbers yet because she has to run that by her board. She has some ideas as far as, you know, being able to pay somebody to be on call during the day because we have issues with people, you know, during the day. And we know, I mean, when you're on call, you have to be, you have to be available and ready to go. You can't be taken up to the water park or something.
Splash pad?
No, go into the splash pad, nope.
Oh.
And don't.
Yeah, I I I'm uh, kind of impressed with what they came up with. Uh, it looks to me like uh, there's gonna be a major help here on uh, the consulting because a lot of that plate work and stuff has been done, figured out.
Well, there is no consulting.
I mean, on the old.
Oh.
The old, the original one.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need to pay that sixty uh, sixty thousand dollars, forty for the consulting and twenty to put it in place. That's.
Total was sixty-five.
Yeah, that's a waste.
I was fully in agreement by eliminating that. I mean, the initial consulting, I think, was beneficial. But anything beyond that, I think, is far beyond what's needed.
Right.
That can be done in-house.
Exactly.
EMS.
Yeah. Well, and.
With input from the different communities and stuff.
Yes.
Well, when I was meeting with Mr. Kurkov from the ambulance advisory committee, I said, you know, contact some of these other counties that have already done this and talk to them about how their organizational structure is and how it's working for them. Instead of relying on a consultant, actually talk to them and find out what's working and what's not.
Well, um, the ambulance chief's chief and Joseph Kim was gonna contact Wright County because they have a similar structure and talk to them and figure out how they did it.
To me, this is a lot more realistic because you got a division here between wants and needs.
Yeah, we don't need a chase car.
I I think uh, with the consulting thing, you're gonna see a lot of wants and not the needs.
Right. And that's what he kept putting back in was the wants.
Hmm.
And it didn't answer the question as to how to pay for an ambulance service for the county.
So, John, you've been meeting a lot with John and your own name, or point person on the ambulance thing and stuff like that, saying, what what do we need to do? What what's the opinion here from both of you that what we need to do here? Uh, accepting this or wanting them to move forward for what kind of blessing do they need here? And this is stuff that they're gonna be actually out there taking to the the communities, to the fire departments, and to all the organizations out there. This is what they want to take to them to help promote and sell the essential services fund.
Correct.
On the back.
And I think that's what we need to do is have a motion to approve their
This.
working plan.
This plan.
As far as how to
Approach everybody.
And proceed with the EMS funding. So I guess I would make a motion that we approve the EMS funding proposal from the EMS advisory board to move forward.
The new plan.
Correct.
Yeah. I would second that.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You're an I too, right?
I was an I, definitely.
Well, and I I think this answers a lot of the questions that we had earlier.
Right, right. And I think we need to talk to Maggie from Spirit Financial. Because I'd like to start getting some numbers together.
Did I send you the response I got from her?
I think so.
I'll make, I'll send that to you.
Are you gonna look into the other one that we've already, that we bonded with before? See if they can do, if they can do the same thing?
I don't think so because they don't offer the same consulting services that uh, Spirit does.
Northland doesn't?
No. They offer the bonding, but they don't have consulting services. And I I've worked with Spirit for seven or eight years and.
Yeah, and Joseph did too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have never worked with Spirit. That's why I was asking if we're, if we were gonna look at both entities to see if there was comparable with whatever our needs are.
Hey, um, any anything else for the do the files?
Anything from the public?
I was about the Buchanan County um, the EMA meeting last Wednesday when we were discussing this, so their biggest concern was just they want all of the members to have the same message, and I think this plan was helpful for them to be able to take it back to their communities and keep this going, so.
Right. Well, and I I understand that there's some concern with Fairbank because Fairbank only, but Fairbank only has one township in Buchanan County, and so how can I fund a three thousand, three hundred thousand dollar ambulance with one? Like, you know, they need to go to the other counties and ask for funding in the cities. Well, and I did hear from um, Janice, the ambulance chief, and she said that she's on vacation. Um, but she'll, she supports the route for the funding for Justin Fairbanks, so.
And I would highly suggest, and I looked at, I'm gonna review it some more, the ambulance report that just came out last week, the calls and stuff. That's interesting information.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, Joseph takes about three hundred and fifty calls, Fairbank a hundred and fifty, and about eleven hundred, well, seven hundred nine-one-one calls for the Independence area and five hundred transfers on that stat, so.
And I have also, I had talked, reached out and talked to, and he said that he was fine with me making this statement on his behalf. I talked to the CEO of Buchanan County Healthcare, Wade, and there, his, the hospital trustee board and him and the staff up there is highly in favor of and thinks that the ambulance service needs to be housed and operated out of the hospitals up there. It's it's working great. And it's gonna make sure that there's maximum service provided and stuff, and it just, it's just a good fit.
Yeah.
And he said, there's no push from them to move the ambulance service out of there. They're more than happy to have it housed and operate out there.
Well, we've already made a significant investment in orders for them and everything else there. It's, it's a good fit.
And then, um, well, forward was Kim had sent it to me late last night. I mean, it doesn't, this doesn't replace what Joseph's already currently giving. It just adds to it, so, yes.
It's a double mention.
It does, but well, you can't keep running, excuse me, I got a frog. You can't keep running the ambulance service off the backs of volunteers. It just doesn't work. I mean, Joseph got a great group of people. They volunteer very well, and they they're very community oriented. I can't, but there needs to be something there. Yes.
Education gets out there and it's positively backed by everyone. I was working home health in two thousand and six. And I was working in Hazelton, coming through Fairbank, Amish Boulevard to go to Littleton to my next visit. I not yet had a on a curb, hard cross underlying that I swerved, but I ran into my car and that was the side of my car. So I called nine-one-one. Is there life-threatening injuries? There's injuries. They are not life-threatening injuries. Oh, well, we don't have anybody. Did, did I just call nine-one-one? I I think I just called nine-one-one. I think like, we don't have anybody to send to you. Can you wait for three or four hours? He said, no, I I can't. Well, we have a deputy looking for a stolen car in Lamont and the sheriff's in Waterland. Let me try state patrol and have somebody get back to you. I checked with the other driver. The problem was that person was somewhat impaired. They were rifling through the back of their Jeep. It was awful. And I ended up getting transportation to my next visit, which I did, and then went into Allen and reported to my supervisor and went through the ER down there, but I was working, so it was a work come. I have no police report. I have nobody responding to an accident. Um, he probably could have utilized an ambulance, and he wasn't pretty close or by many means. He was okay when he left the scene of the accident, but that's terrifying. That's terrifying when you call nine-one-one and you're told, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that doesn't happen today, but if we resolve that problem. And we also, you know, now our sheriff's department has a rescue team that they operate, so.
Yes, but.
Yes, they're on duty.
Typically, they are. There's, there's such a, like, like, sometimes the response times are considerable, you know, what we feel like, you know. And of course, when you're sitting in that situation, the minutes feel like hours. And that, so I just hope that this is positively received and education goes out to the communities because you can't put a price on the life.
Yeah. You expect, you call for assistance, they're gonna dispatch somebody on their way.
Yeah.
Anything else? Anybody else?
I got something here and I'm hoping that the weather cools down a little bit because the south end HVAC system is not working at the maximum. There's still gotta be continuing repairs done on it and stuff. The TXV valve may be okay, but they think it's the evaporator that's plugged, so we're not getting good circulation. Uh, so there may, and I talked to the technician a couple of times, Jake. And I told him to get a final proposal quote to us and what this is all gonna cost. And Jason, uh, the energy person for our contract from Bregi is supposed to be getting me something here in the near future on the cost of finishing up the repairs so we can get the AC operating at maximum capacity and efficiency.
Well, feels a lot better here today than it did last week.
So as a heads up on that, I've been doing some light work and stuff to continue to work on with Sean, county attorney, and Karen's the HR and stuff and Brian, um, on making sure that we're meeting the needs of the requirements of having a contract with county engineer. So I've been working on that and I'm hoping here in the very near future we'll have that put together and we can, I can get that presented here at a board meeting for approval. There's a few things that we gotta work on here as, as far as the bonding and stuff like that. So we'll get that all worked out and stuff so that can be presented and approved. Uh, on one night because what's happening in my personal life and other things we've been working on, the wind turbine issue and everything else going crazy with the the attorney's office and up there. I told Josh, I was right the other day, I met him out here in front and I told him, I said, I wanna go back to working on getting rid of those three county properties that the county needs for no reason at all, get them back in private hands. So we can start taxing, property taxing on them. One's not gonna be, when you drop in the bucket, there's one that's gonna be a fair amount. So going back to work on that, uh, what our proper legal procedure is on working through this. And I think Josh, I mean, we've all been presented that. I think he's got pretty much maybe planned how we work through this now and stuff like that. And I kind of, I called Dawn in because of her realtor expertise. Uh, so she's been kinda uh, working on this with me also to get this something so we can make sure that we properly and legally dispose of these properties and get them in private hands.
We've kind of talked about that over the last year or so. It makes good sense.
But it seems like I kind of worked towards that and there's always something, a more priority that comes up that we're working on and stuff. So anyway, I, I just wanna, that's something I want to get cleaned up here, here and hopefully next couple of months too.
Have you heard anything from service roofing on when they're gonna, they're coming to us?
I'm, well, last before this happened and then you called, they got ahold of them to go ahead and.
They said they're gonna put it on their schedule and I haven't heard anything back.
I haven't heard anything back from Andy, Andy Miller, I think is his name.
Yeah.
If, if you wanna reach out and ask them where they're at on their schedule and stuff.
I'll give.
Thank God that we, that hasn't completely, with that being loose and we get heavy wind, you never know when that membrane can get caught and just ripped and we got a whole chunk of bloat off the roof out here in the parking lot.
Well, and I'm concerned because this afternoon we're supposed to have possible deratio type winds uh, in excess of sixty miles an hour. And I started thinking about that this morning. I thought, gosh, we haven't heard anything back from them. But I'll give you a call.
All right. Thanks, John.
And while we're talking about projects, um, I contacted Michael Halligan about the old public health building, new food pantry building, that dog house in the back and that ratted out back door and stuff.
And that, that other door is internal?
Right, yeah. Well, and since the county does, you, you know, you do the work and then we pay you. He's trying to get his, all his roofing stuff done. So he has, you know.
Funds available.
Funds available. He, he said it wouldn't hurt his feelings if we went someplace else. Do you guys want me to contact somebody else? And we also need to put a gutter on the back door, over the back door of the food pantry.
That we did that.
Well, I contacted somebody, but they haven't gone out there and looked at it yet. So I can contact somebody else and see if maybe they can do the whole job. Because I mean, the small gutter is like, probably not a very big job. So how do.
Cost of materials, very low.
Right. So how do you get somebody out here to do it without having another carrot to have yet?
Your gessel back on the boards, so you can just go out there and do it. Go on, show me.
Which reminds me out there, I'm gonna call Smedley Electric. They haven't finished up, he has not finished up the final switch over electric wires out there and back yet. So I'm gonna call him and say that needs to get done. You know, we put it off, put it off, put it off. It's time to get it completed.
Yeah, I guess I didn't realize that it hadn't been done yet.
Yeah. So, yeah, they're still dangling out of the conduit out there. I mean, they're not live wires, but it needs to be done. And I'm also gonna contact the painter, uh, that was gonna paint, finish painting the restroom, public restrooms here. Uh, he was gonna contact me last week, but he hasn't did that. So I'm, he said that he figures he can come in and get that done. So I'm gonna reach out to him and, and hopefully he can come in and get that project completed and hold it at the same quote that he gave us. That was immensely less than the other quotes.
Okay, no. And are you guys okay if I contact somebody else to?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
You don't have anything else?
Have nothing else. Chris, anything?
I'm out the rest of the week. I'll be back in on Tuesday.
That's fun to hear.
It's more work than it's fun.
What's that? Did your goats are gonna be there?
Yeah, well, we're on the goat committee, so I, we have weigh-ins tomorrow night. So I gotta help with that. Wednesday, I help with the, uh, swine show. Thursday, the goat show, Friday, the heifer shows, Saturday, I'm working in the beef producers stand. Sunday, junior fun day. We got kids coming up to show goats. And then it's also the goat getters program that Craig and I are involved in with, um, adults and youth that mental, physical disabilities, they get to go in the ring and show.
Oh, fun.
You ought to get it on the fair board.
You do.
How's that new postage machine working?
Good, really good. Um, one of the things with the equipment that I purchased, like for example, the passports we send out, those go out in priority mail. Normal cost is nine dollars and eighty-five cents with the new shipping unit that we purchased. That postage is discounted, so it costs us eight dollars and eighteen cents. So that's for anybody mailing out boxes. Um, Gina can use it for when they mail out license plates and things like that. So hopefully we will see a significant reduction in our postage costs.
That's awesome.
That's good.
Yep.
There's nothing else. Ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is everybody?